Good evening and welcome to the regular meeting of the Worcester City Council scheduled for this Monday, October 16. It's after 7:30 PM. Our next meeting will be Tuesday, or will be Monday, November 6, 2017. If you would, Mr. Paul, please call the roll.
Mr. Ansel?
Here.
Mr. Cavan?
Here.
Ms. Knappich?
Here.
Mr. Myers?
Here.
Mr. Sanders?
Here.
Mr. Silvestri?
Here.
Mr. Albright.
And Mr. Albright did notify us at the last meeting he would not be in attendance tonight. We do have a quorum and the agenda will remain as presented. It should be noted that at the end of the legislative portion, we do have an executive session scheduled. That will change and I haven't been told it's going to change. At this time, I ask you to stand and join the members of City Council in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all. And if someone would be so inclined, I would entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the October 2, 2017 council meeting.
So moved.
Mr. Silvestri move to approve?
Second.
Second, Mr. Ansel. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. The minutes of October 2 are approved. Mr. Mayor, welcome.
Thank you, Ms. Breitendike and council members. Nice to see everybody this evening. Just a few things I want to bring you up to speed on. I'm maybe a little road weary. I just walked in the door about five minutes ago from the Heritage Ohio meeting down in Columbus. And I've got the honor to represent our area on the Board of Heritage Ohio. They just asked me here in the last month if I would be interested in doing that. So it's the parent organization of the Main Street programs and with Sandra, our favorite downtown lady is on the Board also and has been for many years, but now they've asked some of the citizens here in Worcester to be a part also. So it was a very nice honor and it's going to be a really interesting group. I wanted to bring to your attention, and so you get it on your calendars, we are going to be doing the celebration for the Best Hometown Award from Ohio Magazine and also the top 100 places honor of Money Magazine. On November 17, at the beginning of winter, our Window Wonderland in the downtown. So we thought that was a good time to do it. People are always in a very jolly and happy mood. It's probably one of the biggest crowds we get, especially at this time of the year. And so we're going to piggyback on that with the Chamber and also Main Street. And we are going to be starting tentatively around 6 o'clock that night. We'll be on the front side of it and then we'll roll straight out of our award and the publisher from Ohio Magazine is going to be there to present our city the award. So we'll be doing that at the very beginning and then rolls into the Christmas tree lighting in the cemetery and then rolls straight into, is the reason everybody's there and that's Santa Claus and the Window Wonderland aspects through the downtown. So put it on your calendar, we'll give you more information as time goes on. I wanted to also note that there is a community open house for the new wing of the hospital on November 4, starting at noon. That's a Saturday and so if you haven't seen that yet, I wanted to make you aware of that. I just wanted to bring you up to speed a little bit on an issue that a number of you have been talking about and definitely something we've been talking about internally for the last two, three weeks. And that is some of the housing issues that we've been dealing with here in town. I know many of you have had some complaints about noise, complaints about potential drug use, property maintenance type of issues. So there are truly only about four houses that have occupied most of our attention in town here. And I just wanted you to know that that is a subject that we've talked about many, many times, both our police department, our building standards, our law department, on what we can do and what we can't do. And I want to assure you that we are doing everything that we can legally do to address issues in these houses. We do have guidelines that we have to follow, laws, and we are following them. Sometimes it doesn't allow us to do things that we would like to do or the neighbors would like us to do, but they are the laws that we live within. But I'm going to use the team to sort of let them tell it from their perspective because they're living it every day. So I'm going to turn it over to Matt Fisher, our police chief, to sort of bring you up to speed from a policing end. He's going to turn it over to Tim One, and he'll talk about it from a property maintenance end and then it'll end with Linda Applebaum, our law director, to tell you briefly legal ends. Now, I know there's going to be a meeting on November 6 to talk in detail about this. This is just to give you a snapshot right now where we are and so that you know and then can have questions, which we'll be happy to go into greater detail on the 6th. All right, Matt?
I'll be brief. I know over the past several months, there have been several emails circulating about some of the problem houses in the city. As a police agency, we want you to know that as soon as these houses were brought to our attention, we've immediately focused our resources on them. Our community impacting it all with patrol division has spent considerable hours watching and taking enforcement action on observed violations on and around these houses. Their actions have led to several search warrants being served, multiple arrests, several arrest warrants being served, and information being obtained that have led to the resolution of several other felony crimes within the city. In addition to all of this, police administration has made numerous phone calls to property owners, property lien holders, and attorneys to advise them of the issues and request their assistance in abating some of these issues. To date, we are still awaiting lab results on some of deceased narcotics from the Bureau of Criminal Investigation. Should those results return positive for the presence of narcotics, further criminal charges will be filed with the Wayne County Prosecutor's Office. In closing, we realize the issue these problem residences can bring to the neighbors and the neighborhood, and we're doing everything we can within the confines of the law to address these issues from a law enforcement perspective. While many people might wish we could simply kick the door and involve people to jail, the truth is the probable cause requirements in the Fourth Amendment simply don't allow us that luxury. We're looking forward to the meeting Mr. Cavan's going to be having on the 6th so we can answer questions and help educate people about what the law will allow us to do in regards to some of these residences. And in the meantime, we would simply request that you advise any constituents who might contact you to contact dispatch immediately when they have turned criminal behavior so that the patrol division can be sent and enforcement action can be taken if that's the appropriate course. Thank you. Tim?
Thank you, Chief Fisher and Mayor. Appreciate that. I just wanted to maybe put a little bit of context on, from a property maintenance standpoint, you know there's almost 12,000 housing units in Worcester. Given our population and being a county C, we have about 56% owner occupied housing. The rest is rental, so a little more than half. Houses that were built before 1939, about 2,400 or 20%. Houses built before 1969, almost 50 years ago, 5,700 or 48%. So half of the housing is at least 50 years old of these nearly 12,000 housing units that we have. So when we're talking about a handful of houses, I guess it's good to kind of put it into context with what we have as housing. We have a lot of older housing. We have quite a bit of rental. And the median home value is about $126,000. The median rent, meaning the midpoint, half above or higher, half lower, is about $650 a month. And this is information from the 2015 census data. So I know, Council, we were here not too long ago to request some money for demo and appreciate the fact that Council puts a priority on property maintenance. And we've always had the funds. I think we spent about $50,000 a year in abatement. I think a few years back, we had a real nice series of meetings that resulted in us hiring a full-time property maintenance inspector and a new program to go out and inspect in the RT district. And so we have all of these tools that you made available, administrations made available, that we use to attack the problem. Our property maintenance code is how we deal with the fact that we have an older housing stock and we have nearly half rentals. And that's the tool that we have. So it's enabled us this year, we've already taken down three houses, we've got four more that are ready to be demolished and that'll be done in the next four to six weeks and then maybe two more by year's end even after that for a total of nine houses. That's a pretty significant number of houses. That's, we're in about 60 houses torn down in the last five or six years. I think that's a pretty healthy number. So all of this protects, as you know, the safety, the sanitary facilities, promotes good neighborhoods, property values being maintained, and harmonious relationships between neighbors. When you have a bad neighbor and they're calling you, it's good that you can come to the city and we can deal with that so we can address that. But as Chief Fisher said, there are things that we can't address using the property maintenance code. One thing is we can't target rental properties. We cannot demand entry into someone's home, be it a rental home or their own personal residence. We can't demand entry. We can't define what a family unit is. That's defined in the law, who's allowed to occupy certain properties. So the things that we can do, we do vigorously enforcement. So just this year, to date so far, we've had about 1,200 different property maintenance cases that we've opened, almost 1,800 inspections, and we've documented 600 violations that we've been dealing with. And out of those 600 violations, about two-thirds of them have been resolved and they're resolved by the owner. So we're working with the owner, we're bringing resolution to those cases. About 18% of the time, we've done the resolution, meaning that we've abated it, we've then certified those costs in the auditor. Usually it's mowing, hauling away garbage and debris, sometimes we'll board up a property. That's about 18% of the time. And about another 18% or so are in progress, we're working with them. Doesn't fit into any of those categories. And about 5% of the time, we have to go to the prosecutor, which we do. So at any given time, we might have 20 or so cases with the prosecutor's office so we can seek resolution to these problems. And so when we can do something, we are doing something. There are times that's frustrating for us when we can't, but some of these specific cases, we'll go into some detail when we have our committee meeting and we look forward to being able to tell you what we have done, what we can do. Maybe there are some cases where we can do a little more, so that's what we'll do.
I'm not really going to lecture you. I mean, you know, most of you know I'm not the policy maker here, I'm just a lawyer. So if something's brought to my attention, administration wants my advice on doing something, I will give the advice to them on what we can do or not do and whether it's likely to be successful on the merits. And we just sent out a notice letter, as you guys know, to one of the property owners about a nuisance and we'll follow up on that and pursue it, but I have to have authorization from them because it's a civil matter. So, you know, I'll be there on the 6th to answer questions to any legal related issues and maybe things that we need to explore, doing differently if possible. What did you have?
One of the things I would like addressed at the November 6 meeting is what we can do about houses that are in foreclosure, houses that are abandoned and those places have squatters in them. And we know there's drug activity going on. There are people living there without running water, any facilities, electricity. These are some things that if we need to get the banks who own the foreclosures involved, then we need to do that. So I'd like some answers to that on the 6th.
And then, Mr. Breitendike, that was just sort of a primer to get people thinking of questions. If you have other things that you would like to have addressed on the 6th, please let us know and we'll come for you.
I guess there'll be plenty of questions because I think Mr. Cavan plans to have a bulk of it, allowing the citizens to have, offer suggestions or have an opportunity to make comments. All right.
Thank you.
We do have a petition for liquor license. It's a new liquor license, South of Oz LLC, 156 East Liberty Street. So, Mr. Paul, do you have anything more you can add on that?
It's a D5 permit class. The location, as you said, is 156 East Liberty Street, Worcester, Ohio. And in case you didn't know where this was, it's at the corner of Buckeye and Liberty. And I believe it's one of those paint and brush and wine places that's going in there.
Another one?
Another one.
Okay.
Like the brush and the beverage.
Okay.
All right. Well, I know everyone knows that we have three options, request a hearing here, request a hearing down in Columbus or waive having a hearing. What's your pleasure, Council?
Motion to waive hearing, Mr. President.
Mr. Ansel moves to waive hearing. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Myers. Would you please call the roll on the waiver of a hearing.
Ansel?
Yes.
Cavan?
Yes.
Knappich?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Sanders?
Yes.
Silvestri?
Yes.
Okay, the hearing will be waived. And if you would, Mr. Paul, let the Ohio Division of Liquor Control know that we, as a city, waive having any sort of hearing if you want to. I don't think there are any committee reports or public hearings, but we'll go into communications from the public. Mr. Garris, please stand and state your name and address.
My name is Mr. Garris, 347 North France Street. And I had a comment on the ordinance in 2017-30 with management benefits of codified ordinances of the city of Worcester. Whether the city's act of privilege, who was coming down the road with the fact of the scenes that all unified city ordinances will be simplified at some point by the state and will become a part of the state code. How then would that manage your benefit system here with the discussion you're having tonight? A method of then simplifying our unified code and city ordinances? How might that help or hinder what you're doing tonight with the discussion of management benefits?
Well, do you have something you would like them lighten us on or your opinion on this? This is a debating society or really a question and answer portion. So what's your viewpoint on it?
My viewpoint is that it seems that when this happens, it's going to be beneficial to all because it's going to simplify all unified state ordinances under one state ordinance law as such. And my opinion was, if you have seen that or if you have heard that and if that's something you're considering now with this evening's discussion with your management benefits currently as you want to?
Well, I think everyone's stymied because unless they repeal the constitution of the state of Ohio, there's still some home rule powers here in the state and they cannot just by a wave of a pen eliminate all municipalities' codified ordinances.
Well, that's something then also too, that if you wish to petition that, you would have to petition the state. At this time, all 88 counties would have to agree to that petition and not all citizens of those 88 counties would have to vote on that as well.
So I don't think that's something that's pending currently. I don't, not that I know of at least. There's nothing currently pending before the state or the state legislature or that any 88 counties have agreed to or the citizens of 88 counties have agreed to, to put all the codified ordinances under the state. So I don't think that there's anything currently pending that would affect what we're doing this evening.
Good, thank you.
All right. As I said, no committee reports or public hearings or we'll write into old business. Second reading of ordinance number 2017-30. It will be presented by Ms. Knappich. Mr. Paul, would you please read the title?
Ordinance number 2017-30, an ordinance amending Chapter 162, Management Benefits of Codified Ordinances of the City of Worcester, Ohio.
Ms. Knappich, the floor is yours.
Yes, thank you very much. We had quite a bit of discussion last meeting on this. I did want to apologize to Mr. Myers, I wasn't aware that he was not, I missed the email that he was not going to be there at last meeting. And because I know he wanted to be a part of that discussion, I hope you got all the information that he wanted from the meeting and from the city. But we did discuss this at great length at our last meeting. This basically would be adding in or re-adding a position of human resources coordinator. That position used to be with the city before we tightened our belts and dropped that position and for some reason it was also dropped from the ordinance. It would give us a human resources manager, human resources specialist, and also human resources coordinator. Now, all of those jobs have different functions. Jeanette is a human resources manager and does a wonderful job. Human resources specialist does some things that assist her and support her. And then the human resources coordinator also supports those two positions as well. The need for this is twofold. We discussed quite a bit and then the city provided us with additional information regarding the additional responsibilities, both in man-hours and financially, that had been put upon the city as a result of WORCOG. And I would just like to clarify that this position is not going to be devoted 100% to WORCOG. There was a need for this position above and beyond or aside from the WORCOG responsibilities. And in addition, we've got with WORCOG, a new union that HR is going to be dealing with, and we also have some union negotiations that Jeanette Wagner is going to be engaged in coming up here. So I wanted to make it clear that we're not spending all the resources of this one person on WORCOG. This person will actually be working for the city with some responsibilities allocated to WORCOG for which the city is reimbursed by the other members of WORCOG. So I just wanted to make that clear and then open it up for any questions. Everybody must have gotten their questions answered at the last meeting. Okay. Mr. Breitendike, anything? All right, then I would move to suspend the rules.
Motion to suspend the rules by Ms. Knappich. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Silvestri. Could you please call the roll on the suspension of the rules?
Ansel?
Yes.
Cavan?
Yes.
Knappich?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Sanders?
Yes.
Silvestri?
Yes.
Okay, the rules are suspended. I look to you again, Ms. Knappich.
Thank you. Motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt by Ms. Knappich. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Cavan. Would you please call the roll on the motion to adopt?
Ansel?
Yes.
Cavan?
Yes.
Knappich?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Sanders?
Yes.
Silvestri?
Yes.
Ordinance number 2017-30 passes. And I did not get the memo who was pinch hitting for Mr. Albright. Mr. Ansel is, okay. So that brings us to the first item under New Business, Resolution Number 2017-43. It will be presented by Mr. Ansel in pinch hitting for Mr. Albright. The copy I had said it was budgeted, so doesn't require suspension of the rules. But before we even get to you, Mr. Ansel, I must go through Mr. Paul's. Would you please read the title?
Resolution Number 2017-43, a resolution authorizing the Director of Administration to enter into a cooperative agreement with the Ohio Department of Transportation for the reservicing of portions of certain roads in the city of Worcester.
Looking to you there, Mr. Ansel.
Thank you, Mr. President. More good news. ODOT, the funding stream through our fuel taxes are alive and work and we have an opportunity for a much needed infrastructure improvement. The request before us this evening authorizes the mayor to enter into a cooperative agreement with the Department of Transportation through the LPA, local public agency, for the reservicing of much needed repairs on Beaver Street from Bowman to Dillard Point, Wayne Avenue from Beaver to Bell, and Bell Avenue from Bloomington to the Point, and Cleveland Road from Highland to State Route 83. We're all familiar with those stretches of roadway repairs, so it's a must, a very much appreciated initiative. All the construction engineering contract management inspection will be performed in-house by our engineering staff. That always generates additional savings for the city of Worcester. The projected cost is $750,000, of which the ODOT grant will consist of $428,000 or 57%. And our total local fund utilization will be $322,000 or 43%. And that will include the engineering services, internal costs associated with those projects. So again, great news. This has been a banner year and hopefully next year the momentum continues. A lot of positive feedback from Worcester residents, almost tongue in cheek at times because now that we're having all of these repairs, there's a little bit of tension in terms of traffic flow and challenges. So, you know, that's the short term sacrifice that you make when all of these backlog projects come to the forefront. But we're making great progress, thanks to the state of Ohio and the federal government for their ongoing subsidy to these required repairs. So I'll, Mr. Kowalarsik is here this evening. If there are any specific questions, if not, let's get on with business and get this teed up and ready to go and get the application grant signed in the state hands. Seeing none, seeing no questions, I will motion to pass Resolution 2017-73, Mr. President.
Okay, motion to adopt Resolution Number 2017-43 by Mr. Ansel. Is there a second, Mr. Myers? Would you please call the roll on the motion to adopt?
Cavan?
Yes.
Knappich?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Sanders?
Yes.
Silvestri?
Yes.
Ansel?
Yes.
Resolution Number 2017-43 passes. Ordinance Number 2017-32 will be presented by Ms. Knappich. It's slated for three readings. If you would, Mr. Paul, would you please read the title?
Ordinance Number 2017-32, an ordinance amending Chapter 163 of the Worcester Codified Ordinances with respect to part-time and temporary employees by adding new section 163.07.
Ms. Knappich, the floor is yours.
Yes, thank you very much. We had talked about some of the changes recently about hourly pay ranges for various employees. But what we did not have in our ordinances was an hourly pay range for temporary But what we did not have in our ordinances was an hourly pay range for temporary seasonal part-time employees. And those include some of the people that we hire to help with maintenance and to help with the city for various functions around. It used to be the lifeguards, but we've, and those folks, but we've kind of contracted that out. So, but we do have other seasonal and part-time employees.
Leaf raking comes to mind, only because I got a ton in my arse.
That's true. Leaf raking is a big one. I didn't think of it because I just put it back in my woods. But what we want to do is for non-professional employees, we would set a minimum wage of what would be the minimum hourly wage set by the state and federal laws, maximum to $23 an hour. And then for professional employees, we would start at an hourly rate of $23 an hour to a maximum of $50 an hour. And then it does go on to state that the hourly rates can be adjusted based upon market survey data, but not in excess of the annual cost of living adjustment, which is published by Opers. So it's kind of a cleanup thing, something we didn't have in our ordinance, something we need to have in our ordinances. I don't anticipate it to be very controversial, but then sometimes I don't and sometimes they are. So I'll open it up for questions.
And I should just add, there are also rumors now that part-time is 30 hours or less.
Right, right. Yet we had added that to the ordinance previously.
Right. But the other ordinance said they could only work, what it's replacing said they could only work 20 hours. So that's the other reason we're also doing it.
Okay.
We had an annual salary cap, and that was a problem because it was based on 20 hours.
Yeah.
And why that was put in there? I don't know. Because these people have always been hourly, and they have to keep track of their hours even back then. So there was no reason for that, and that's inconsistent with the way we changed this. So it's a problem.
So then this makes it consistent throughout all of the ordinances?
Yeah.
And removes the cap?
Right, and it needed to be adjusted for CPI, hasn't been adjusted since 2005.
Otherwise, we would have had 30 hours for part-time, but this would, if we didn't change this, then part-time under this could only work 20 hours. So.
Right. That's, yeah, so it makes it consistent.
It was also not codified, and I'm not sure why that was either.
Yeah.
Right.
It should have been.
So another housekeeping-type ordinance and also had been updated in terms of the salary range in, what, 12 years?
12 years.
Yeah, so it's done.
There's no discussion, then I would like to move to suspend the rules.
Okay. Motion to suspend the rules by Ms. Knappich, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Silvestri. Would you please call the roll on the motion to suspend the rules?
Knappich?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Sanders?
Yes.
Silvestri?
Yes.
Ansel?
Yes.
And Cavan?
Yes.
Ms. Knappich, I turn you again.
Motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt by Ms. Knappich, is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Cavan, seconded. Motion to adopt by Ms. Knappich, would you please call the roll?
Knappich?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Sanders?
Yes.
Silvestri?
Yes.
Ansel?
Yes.
Cavan?
Yes.
Ms. Knappich, I turn you again.
Motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt by Ms. Knappich, is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Cavan, seconded. Motion to adopt by Ms. Knappich, would you please call the roll?
Knappich?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Sanders?
Yes.
Silvestri?
Yes.
Ansel?
Yes.
Cavan?
Yes.
Ms. Knappich, I turn you again.
Motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt by Ms. Knappich, is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Cavan, seconded. Motion to adopt by Ms. Knappich, would you please call the roll on the motion to suspend the rules?
Knappich?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Sanders?
Yes.
Silvestri?
Yes.
Ansel?
Yes.
And Cavan?
Yes.
Ms. Knappich, I turn you again.
Motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt by Ms. Knappich, is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Cavan, seconded. Motion to adopt by Ms. Knappich, would you please call the roll?
Knappich?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Sanders?
Yes.
Silvestri?
Yes.
Ansel?
Yes.
Cavan?
Yes.
Ms. Knappich, I turn you again.
Motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt by Ms. Knappich, is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Cavan, seconded. Motion to adopt by Ms. Knappich, would you please call the roll?
Knappich?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Sanders?
Yes.
Silvestri?
Yes.
Ansel?
Yes.
Cavan?
Yes.
Ms. Knappich, I turn you again.
Motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt by Ms. Knappich, is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Cavan, seconded. Motion to adopt by Ms. Knappich, would you please call the roll?
Knappich?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Sanders?
Yes.
Silvestri?
Yes.
Ansel?
Yes.
Cavan?
Nope.
Knappich?
Yes.
Okay, resolution number 2017 dash 44 passes. Brings us to the final piece of legislation this evening, resolution number 2017 dash 45, will be presented by Mr. Ansel. It is slated for three readings. Before I get to you, Mr. Ansel, I will call upon Mr. Paul one last time to read the title of the ordinance.
Resolution number 2017 dash 45, a resolution authorizing the Director of Finance to enter into a one-year contract with Superior Inc. for both ASP and technical support services for both the Finance Department and the Human Resources Division.
Mr. Ansel, the floor is yours.
Thank you. We're all very familiar with this piece of annual legislation. Our Finance Department wishes and is recommending to renew the contract that the city has with Superior, formerly known as Sun Guard. They were sold, provide support services, an application service provider services for a one-year extension period. The contract for the upcoming year will be $130,600. That represents a 5 percent increase to prior year, roughly $6,500. The services that are included in this agreement covers product licensing for all of our modules, licensing for all third-party products, and software support, as well as ASP services, including software hosting on the Superior provided hardware and disaster recovery program series. The highlight here is this is a budgeted item, and we're running consistent, and periodically every five to seven years, the City Finance Department does a competitive review. And after this renewal extension period, next year they will be reviewing alternate service options and do a comparative price review, so we ensure that the taxpayer dollars are being spent appropriately. But we all know from our past discussions on this that this is one of a few selected service providers that have a great track record of service and software protocols and operating protocols for our Finance Department and our entire HR functions and department. So this is their skill set, they're very well-recognized and accredited. But next year, that dubious process of competitive review for any upgraded software modules and systems will be undertaken, so we'll verify for the next term period, five to seven years, that we're enjoying the highest value for the taxpayers. If there are any questions, generally they're not because this is a repetitive renewal process. Andre and staff are here, Sarah Lynn, I'm sure they would be happy to answer any technical questions. I know we have some technical people on council here, so if there are any questions, the floor is open. David?
My only question would be, is this the group out of Chico, California?
Yes.
And there's still no delay even with the change over to Sun Guard? So it's instantaneous information we're getting back, phenomenal. If they're doing that from California, that 5 percent increase doesn't make me happy, but I guess we've got to deal with it.
Moderate for California.
Right, right. It's their CPI indicators.
Okay. You have one and a half the national.
How many of the departments depend on this, yours and?
Well, we're the workforce, so to speak, but every department does. HR and then it's a large user, we're the largest user, then you have all the satellite departments that enter payroll and PO data and budgeting data.
So basically, without this, the city, for the most part, bulk of the management would grind to a halt.
Right, and it's hosted at their sites, they do all the maintenance.
With a disaster recovery backup site, should the primary site get, you know, impacted by the fires or any of those issues, there's a primary and a secondary disaster recovery plan that's pretty stout, if we recall.
More and more software now being cloud-based, as opposed to us actually having it on our computers in terms of the program itself.
If something were happened at this building, we could go to auxiliary building and log on the internet and.
Like nothing happened.
Like that would have.
At one time, we talked about going to the Safety Services Center for that. Is that still?
We could go to the Safety Service Center, all we need is a laptop or actually a computer hook in to the internet, or Citrix Connection is called, and we're up and running.
I will highlight, as a business owner who has a comparable type of activity summary to the city of Worcester, $135,000 a year for all of the software and licensing upgrades and maintenance is a remarkable value. I don't know of any business that's a 20-plus-million-dollar business with a couple of hundred staff that can operate all of their software applications for $130,000 a year. So that's been remarkable value, and you're happy with the product and the services that it delivers. And you have a familiarity with it, too. I mean, its operating protocols going into something new might be quite a challenge in future days.
How many years is there on them?
We've been live with them since 1999 and ASP since 2007.
It's been a good run, they've done a good job, at a very competitive price. So seeing no questions, I will motion to adopt.
There's a question, is this, was in this year's budget? Because there was a cryptic thing that there are sufficient funds in the, I know this is minutia, but we want to get it right, that there are sufficient funds in the 2017 budget to cover the contract, seemed to me that it wasn't budgeted, but it were also providing for it in the 2018.
Ms. Knappich, it's contractual date terms, so the contract expires in October for November 1st. It's a, we have to approve it now, we can't wait until fiscal year 2018, is that correct?
That's correct. We'd spend more than $50,000, which we have to bring you, so by doing the one-year contract, we're coming to you once for this time here.
But timing's off a couple of months, from the calendar year to the fiscal year.
Yeah, but that's what I'm saying, was it actually budgeted in 2017?
Yes, absolutely. It just so happens it's a mid-year contract.
In the future, would you please put it's a budgeted item, that's telegraph what it is, and, because I don't speak accounting.
Hey. That's a fun language.
Now lawyer's better.
If you have this connection extra present, I'll defer, should I, motion to suspend, it says no need for the rules to be suspended, should I just motion to pass?
That was the other reason that it was confusing.
It's got three readings.
Just tell me what to do and I'll do it. This isn't easy.
But you could suspend the rules on anything.
Motion to suspend the rules and adopt resolution 2017 dash 45. Parliamentary procedure.
Suspend the rules by Mr. Ansel, seconded by Mr. Meyer. Would you please call the roll on the suspension of the rules?
Sanders?
Yes.
Silvestri?
Yes.
Ansel?
Yes.
Cavan?
Yes.
Knappich?
Yes.
And Myers?
Yes.
So the rules are suspended, Mr. Ansel?
Motion to adopt, Mr. President.
Motion to adopt by Mr. Ansel, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Knappich, would you please call the roll on the motion to adopt?
Sanders?
Yes.
Silvestri?
Yes.
Ansel?
Yes.
Cavan?
Yes.
Knappich?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Resolution number 2017 dash 45 passes. I will accept the motion to go in executive session to discuss real estate property acquisition and sale.
So move.
Motion to go in executive session by Mr. Ansel is our second.
Second.
Second by Ms. Knappich, would you please call the roll on going into executive session?
Silvestri?
Yes.
Ansel?
Yes.
Cavan?
Yes.
Knappich?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
And Sanders?
Yes.
All right, we are now in executive session, and council will adjourn to the conference.